See you have a deal. I'm getting there like, yeah, well, lower your price, like save me like almost five. Good, that's awesome.
Good evening, everyone. The Saraville Boarding Zone of adjustment meeting of June twenty sixth, two thousand twenty four is now in session. Call to order, salute to the flag, please, have you stand?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Notice of the meeting has been satisfied in accordance with chapter two thirty one, P L nineteen seventy five by advertising in the home news Tribune, notifying the Sentinel Publishing Company and the Star Ledger, and also posting on the bulletin board and filing with the borough clerk. Roll call.
Mr. Green.
Here. Here.
Mr. Esposito.
Here.
Bobstine.
Here.
Mr. Gasselberg.
Here.
Here.
Our first order of business is old business. It's a continuation holdover application, twenty four oh six, in reference, the vacant lot on River Road. Mr. Fisher, would you comment on that?
Sure. Oh, you wanna?
Mr. Page.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, board members, thank you. Uh, Michael Page, I'm the attorney for the department of the L L C regarding to that application. The application was previously scheduled for Bay's meeting, which carried through tonight's meeting. Um, and we respectfully request that be carried to the July, come fourth meeting date. Uh, my client is still in the process of preparing plans, um, post submission. My understanding from having the previous conversations with the boards of terms of that matter, hopefully will be carried with no further notice.
And that's, that's typical, um, carry without further notice. If you have a date certain that you're carrying it to, in this case, it would be, uh, July, uh, twenty fourth. So it would, it's, uh, be normal for the board to do that.
Okay, the meeting will be on July twenty fourth.
Thank you very much.
This microphone, sorry. We gotta get your mic closer. Next application is a holdover application, twenty four dash zero seven forty nine Calliope B Road. Steven, you here?
Just before we start, uh, I'd like to swear in the professionals. Raise your right hand. You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, uh, in this matter, so help you God?
Yep.
All right, professionals are sworn.
Well, where's yours? Hello again. Um, I revised my application. I went down in size, um, Jersey Central Power and Light. They weren't against what I was looking to do. They couldn't give precedence for me. If I was allowed to do it, I had my pool there. I talked to several people, thanks to Joan and, um, Andy. They gave me phone numbers. I got a quick response from them. They weren't anti what I was doing. They just couldn't give their blessing and put it on paper. So I revised my, um, plans to put it on my paver driveway, which is off the, um, the variance. I narrowed the size down to thirteen feet by twenty two rather than eighteen by thirty. Um, is it gonna look a little bit odd in my driveway, which I was trying to keep, um, yo, the appearance for the neighborhood? But if you all look out that window, there's a nineteen seventy two El Camino out there. Pretty hot car. That's who I'm looking to keep in the garage. My twenty two year old daughter drives it as part of her inheritance. Um, it's pretty simple. I'm trying to do everything I could do. I'm just looking for coverage. For, um, I have several cars, but this is one car I'm looking to cover. Um, I have plenty of feet on both sides of where I'm planning on putting the garage. I believe I'm thirty five feet wide from my house to my fence. So it gives me plenty of parking on both sides of the garage. Um, it'll be grounded. It's, it'll be decorative. If you've ever seen my house, I keep my house pretty high and tight. And you have the paperwork? And help me out.
I have a couple of questions I'd like to ask you. You submitted to the zoning board a new proposal. On this proposal, you have, uh, the swimming pool there. Is that there right now?
I removed it in hopes of putting up a garage. I so regret taking it down now that it's ninety five degrees out. But, um, the pool is removed. The concrete walkway is removed. Um, I'm going in, I'm gonna put sod down. I had my sprinklers moved, then adjusted to cover the area to, it's gonna be green space.
Okay, so I just wanted, on the record, when you sent us the new proposal here, the pool is here. So on the record, the pool is removed.
Absolutely, one hundred percent.
Would have any questions of the applicant?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, what are the variances, just for the record?
Um, Chair members of board, it looks like at this point the variance is for the size of the accessory structure. Um, we have a hundred and fifty square foot maximum permitted. The thirteen by twenty two is two hundred and eighty six square feet. Um, I was just double checking, it looks like the setbacks are fine. It's in, it's located in a side yard. So the, uh, the size of the structure is what we're looking at.
Just one bulk variance.
Correct.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Uh, Mr. Chair, um, just one question. So with the new structure, will you be able to access the garage doors that are?
Oh, absolutely. I would never block off, um, again, I'm going for aesthetics for my neighbors and the town as well. Um, the houses in Green Valley have raised in value. I ain't looking to devalue anything. At this point in my life, I want more, not less.
So is the, is the structure gonna have four solid sides or is it more of a canopy?
Um, it's gonna have full size all around. It's gonna have a, um, a nine foot door, seven foot high. It's gonna have four windows. It's gonna have a side entry door, so it's doesn't look like a structure or a shed put up. It's, um, it's my house.
I guess, I guess my only, my only question is based on where it's being located and the size of it. I'm just not sure how you're gonna get into those garage doors if you have a solid structure ten feet off.
Um, it's fully measured out. Anybody needs to see it, it's, uh, believe me, I'm not looking to push it. I'll, I'll do one better. Um, my deck off the back of my house is twelve feet into the easement. Everybody's giving me a hard time. Want me to push it back twelve feet? I'll push it back twelve feet. I'm not looking to do that, but it will not block my, um, garage doors. It'd be crazy looking.
Mr. Chairman, if I might, I, I have the same concerns and I raise the same question. And just looking at the numbers on your plan, you have approximately thirty eight feet from the easement to where you have your curve in your driveway leading into your garage doors. So if you subtract twenty two, that gives you sixteen. You've got two garage doors. So I don't think you're gonna be able to drive a car into two garage doors with only sixteen feet.
It's, it's more than sixteen feet. There's a sunroom off the back of my house that is there and it should be showing on the paperwork.
It, it does, but that is in the.
Where the fence line is.
Right, but that's in the Jersey Central easements. So from where the easements?
But my house is on easement, so I'm not looking to go past my house line. My deck is past the, um, easement line. It's, um, three feet into the easement.
The board can't give you permission to put even this new garage within that easement area. So what I'm saying to you is if you measure from that easement to the front of your house, it's thirty eight feet. And you wanna put twenty two foot garage in thirty eight feet.
Yeah, if that's what the numbers are, but I don't know. Um, I'm showing the house structure at forty three point one feet.
Correct, but that encroaches into the easement, so you can't.
So take three feet off puts me at forty feet. They're saying my encroachment where they, the township and the builder allowed me or the person in nineteen seventy two to build this home, they built this home on the easement. I have, um, I have permits for building my deck. I had a twenty four foot pool, which I'm removing. Well, it's already removed. I mean, how much more am I supposed to do? Um, my garage is nineteen feet deep. It doesn't allow me room to walk around the car to detail it or take care of it. And, and if anybody wants to, yo, I, I, I'm really not worried about the three feet on the easement. Jersey Central Power and Light, they just wouldn't give me the green light because they couldn't put it on paper. But my, my house is on the easement, so you tell me I gotta cut my house apart?
I'm not saying that at all. I'm just saying this board can't grant you permission for any new structure that's within that easement. So as long as you're outside of that easement.
I, I, hey, guys, I appreciate everybody's time. Um, I'm trying the best I could do. I went from eighteen to thirty feet. Yeah, you know what?
I, I under, I understand.
I, I'm already looking at other properties because I had a feeling this wasn't gonna go well.
It's not that we're saying you can't get permission for it. I just want you to understand that you may not have access to both doors.
Let me build it. Let me build it and I'll deal with Jersey Central Power and Light.
We can't do that.
It's nothing to do with me.
Mr. Chairman, I.
To do with the easement. It has nothing to do with the easement.
Mr. Chairman, if I may. So the, the, the side yard setback requirement for an accessory structure is five feet. So right now, what we're looking at is it's setback twelve, twelve feet, eight inches is what's shown here. Um, and it's effectively right in the middle of your driveway after you pull in. Had you thought about sliding?
And I can still park the car on each side of the garage structure.
Right, but I, I think if you hear me out, have you thought about sliding it closer to your neighbor's property so that it's five feet off the property line?
I have a thirty two foot classy motorhome.
Okay. You got it.
That's its parking spot. So where do I win here other than moving?
Just trying to help out, but, uh, you, you got it.
Oh, no, no, I'm, I'm, I'm not saying anything you guys are doing is wrong. I'm in a tough spot and I have some tough decisions to make. And, yo, you guys gotta cover your ass and I get that. Yo, so, um, maybe I put up, maybe I put up one of those canvas tents and.
It's just by law, we, we cannot, we got the letter from Jersey Central, the same as you did, and they're saying that it was in the easement and you're still in it and we can't, we can't do anything unless you can get a letter.
And my house is in the easement. You see, I have a problem with that. You can't say that the left is okay and the right is wrong when my house is on the easement that everybody let them build it. That's his garage. Like, there's a major problem that, so that Jersey Central, at the time when the house was being built, they didn't have the balls enough to say, don't build on that. My house is on it. My deck is on it. My pool was on it.
Mr. Chairman, I don't think the garage is in the easement.
Well, no, no, I'm, I'm not saying it is an easement.
No, you're, now your garage is not in the easement. That's not what they're talking about.
Based on this plan, it's not in the easement, but the concern is that you're putting twenty two feet into thirty eight, so you may not be able to have a car drive into your second driveway or your second garage door. That's, that's the concern.
Absolutely, one hundred. Um, I was a contractor. I ran my business out of this township for fourteen years. If you guys think I came here and didn't do every single measurement, I got pictures, I got anything everybody wants to say. If everybody wants, if you guys want, um, wanna take a ride to my house, I'll lay it out. I'll mark it out. You think I'm happy about putting a garage on a thirty thousand dollar paver driveway? That's why I was looking to put a pass the fence line. So, you know, I'm working with it the best I can. And it's not looking good. I'm gonna put up one of those tents, those round pole tents that I could take down within an hour or two. And it keeps me out of the sun. I'm not asking to, like, build an illegal apartment. I'm, I'm sixty one years old. I'm trying to get out of the sun and play with my cars and watch my younger daughters enjoy older cars.
Mr. Chairman, I'm, I'm not saying that he can't do it. I'm just pointing out.
I bet if I just build it, then I'd do what you guys later.
I'm just saying it's a concern that he should be aware of. If he's comfortable with the layout, it's not encroaching in the easement, so.
Are you comfortable with it, the way it is now?
The way I'm proposing? Ab- 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 absolutely. Would I like it bigger, longer, better? No, but if that, I, I came to this point in hopes of. I didn't come to this point to play games. So the alternative after living here for twenty four years is moving. I'm getting ready to retire. I'm into older classic cars. Period. I'm not a mechanic. It's not a sweatshop. It's not, um, a detail shop. It's my own personal vehicles. I have five cars.
What's the rest of it look like? Like, are you gonna have it sided roof? What, what, what do you plan on doing?
Oh, it's gonna have a full roof. It's gonna have gutters, it's gonna have four windows with graces in the windows. Got overhead door. It's gonna be landscaped outside, like my whole driveway is landscaped.
It's a two car garage, right? Like, like two garage doors?
Now, this will be one car besides attached to my house is a two car. But I don't know why in nineteen seventy two, when they built my house, when they had the big Impalas, the Cadillacs and everything else, they made garages nineteen to twenty feet deep. My nineteen sixty six Chevy pickup truck is nose right up to my garage doors in that garage and a pain in the ass to pull in and out.
But the one you're proposing to build has, has two garage doors, right? Or is it one big garage?
No, it'll be one main door.
One main door, okay.
It's gonna be, um, ten by seven foot high. And the top peak to the, the peak, the A peak, is eleven and a half feet. The original proposal was thirteen and a half feet and it was eighteen by thirty. And I pulled it into my driveway, so technically my driveway and my fence is on easement. As well as my sunroom, my deck, my pool was totally on it. Help me out.
Mr. Barry and Mr. Cornell pointed out to you, and you're satisfied with the garage the way it is, correct?
Absolutely.
Okay. Anyone, anyone else have any questions of this? Okay, I wanna open it up to the public. Anyone from the public wish to speak on this application on Calliope B Road? Anyone from the public wish to speak? Hearing none, I'm, I'm closing the public portion. What's the pleasure of the board concerning this application?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the application be approved.
I have a second? I have a motion to approve and a second roll call vote. Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Mrs. Gottstein.
Yes.
Mr. Gasselberg.
Yes.
Okay, it's been approved. You understand the situation? Good luck.
More than you know. And honestly, the township is very lucky to have Joan and Andrew. They've been nothing but a help to me.
We'll approve this at our, our next meeting when we memorialize it and good luck with your garage.
Thank you, folks. Enjoy. Good night.
Joan, please, 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 please not.
Our next application is sixteen dash twelve Clyde Auto Recycling.
Uh, good evening, uh, Mr. Chair. Uh, Peter Klausser with the firm Heilbronn Pap on behalf of your applicant Clyde Auto Recycling. Uh, this is a request for an extension of time for an approval that was previously granted by this board. Uh, in two thousand and May of two thousand and seventeen, uh, the applicant was before the board and secured preliminary final site plan approval, uh, D two, uh, variance relief, bulk variance relief and some waivers. Um, the property is an existing junkyard. Uh, it is a preexisting nonconforming use. That is why we required the, uh, D two variance last time. So the use itself, the operation is there, has been there and will continue to be there. Um, however, the approvals granted by this board, um, were a significant improvement, uh, to the site and they mainly included the construction of an office and a warehouse, uh, to service the site. Um, you have an ordinance that says any variance that's granted by this board, uh, expires within two years if the applicant does not begin construction. Normally, under the municipal land use law, approvals do not expire. Um, site plans and subdivision approvals don't ever expire. And the case law, the last time I read it, is that the board doesn't have, or towns don't have authority to adopt ordinances which say that they expire. However, um, the courts are pretty clear that you do have authority to adopt an ordinance that variances expire. And you have done it and you've done it correctly and it's applicable in this instance. What happens with site plans and subdivisions is you lose protection, uh, from the zoning ordinance changes. Um, that's the, so a lot of times we say the word expire, but that's not really the case. So the, the site plan, the subdivision, uh, excuse me, the site plan that, that was granted, I think is still, uh, in place, but your used variance relief clearly has expired. Um, but like I said, the used variance relief was good. It was an expansion of a preexisting nonconforming use and it, it improves the site. Uh, shortly after the approvals, the applicant worked, uh, as they normally would to achieve resolution compliance. We were able to secure, as you're aware, the borough of Sayerville and, and Mr. Cornell's office does a lot of things internally. So we were able to secure things like soil conservation. Um, we received an, an approval letter from your planner that the plans, uh, met his requirements. That was Mr. Leon Cavalo at the time. And we've gotten Mr. Cornell's report down to three items. One is the county approval, one is a fire flow test of water, and one was a D E P approval. Um, we have secured the county approval. Uh, it's conditional county approval. The conditions are posting the bond, getting a road opening permit. Um, the D E P has recently, uh, told us that you don't need an approval after everything we went through. And, and I have, um, uh, Jack here from Trident can speak to that a little bit. And then the last item is, uh, a, a, a flow test that as an attorney I don't fully understand, but we have Frank Farrell from Grotto Engineering here to, to testify. Um, and then also I have Clyde Cameron, who is your owner operator, and he can speak to you as to, uh, what these delays were and what their plans are, uh, moving forward and how quickly they think they can move from here, should the board see fit to allow them to rejuvenate, uh, these approvals. Uh, so if I could, Mr. Chair, I'd like to start with Clyde, have him bring up here, uh, come up here and, and explain to you sort of where they're at, um, what happened, uh, during this time. And then, uh, I can move on to Frank and Jack to talk to you a little bit about where the actual plans and approvals sit right now.
I've received, yeah.
Okay, thank you very much. Clyde, why don't you join me? Do we do another mic or do we do a share a mic? I mean, I'm fine with, with sharing.
Please raise your right hand. You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes.
All right, you're sworn.
Oh, that we have, we have another mic.
So Clyde, you heard me speak to the board about the history and the approvals.
Full name and, add a full name for.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's on the text. Go ahead, finish, been sworn in.
Uh, I did swear him in, but we didn't get the full name.
Sure. Clyde Cameron.
Clyde, K I M.
C A M E R O N.
Thank you very much. So if you could just share with the board, what's your relationship to the applicant Clyde Auto Recycling?
Thank you for having us here. Um, we purchased the business from Stadium Auto Records in two thousand and thirteen. I'm sure as many of you know, it was a site that had burned down and became quite dilapidated. We took over, uh, my parents and I, and, you know, trying to improve the site, get the business back from the, the negative that the previous owners put it in. Um, we began trying to secure the building permits. As Peter mentioned, we ran into a few roadblocks. Um, unfortunately, once COVID hit, it was very detrimental to our business. We, we came back out of that. We're here. Um, Andy has been very patient with us and helping us. Uh, it was probably about a year ago. He had reached out and, you know, reminded us that we needed to get this moving. Upon so, we started back on and, um, at that time, we, we had to get approval from the D E P. We just heard back from them that it was no need for those approvals. We don't, we don't, um, don't fit the requirements of what was needed. Um, and we just wanna get moving. We're, we're back on our feet. We, we've came back out of the, you know, financial standpoint we were in during COVID. Uh, we, we're, we're ready to, to get this project moving. We, we anticipate if we can get past this meeting, within two to three months, we could start, you know, construction on the structure and have it finished within a year and, and get our, um, office trailer removed and carry on as a normal business in Sayerville.
Did you, you, you mentioned, you know, you think two to three months. Where did that estimate come from? Did you talk to the building supplier?
That, that was from R and R Pole Buildings. We spoke to them back in twenty seventeen. Um, we had all the, the plans, quotes and, and everything ready to go. Um, that's when we, you know, ran into the roadblocks at that point in time. Um, spoke to them about a week or two ago and they said within a month to get all the plans redone, I everything up to what today's code is and, and break ground within a month after. So from there, a couple of weeks of construction and, um, and then it's just gonna be built on the interior, which we anticipate, you know, a few months, once the, the outside structure is finished.
Thank you. I have no further questions. I'm sure the, the board may have some questions.
I, I have a question. Uh, Mr. Cornell, uh, he said that, uh, Clyde said he doesn't have, he had, doesn't need permission from the D E P. Do we have any, uh, records of that?
Mr. Chairman, I do not. Uh, the last report that we wrote concerning this application was two thousand and nineteen. And as Mr. Klausser indicated, there were three items outstanding at that point in time. And I haven't heard anything about the application since then.
Do you have the paperwork from the D E P saying that it, that you didn't need anything?
Mr. Chair, I brought Jack Kelly from Trident Environmental, who worked closely with the D E P on it, and he could speak to that.
But do you actually have the paperwork?
There's email correspondence between the key, D E P and Jack saying withdraw your application. It's not necessary. And I, I, you know, that, that's my tangential understanding of it, but that's why I brought Jack here so we could explain to you in more detail what exactly happened, what he has from the D E P.
Okay, and what about the, uh, county, uh, approval? So you have that paperwork?
We have a count, yes. Yeah, that was submitted to Ms., uh, Campbell, uh, as part of the application materials, the county approval letter. We didn't have the D E. We didn't have the DEP information until after I submitted the application.
Chairman, I think the county had a conditional approval, so in order to perfect it, he has to address the conditions. So he doesn't have permission from the county to receive a building permit. He's got to address all the conditions, which is typically what the borough asks for to comply with the conditions of the resolution of approval.
And you see from them that it's essentially posting the bond. They give us a bond letter.
All right, next question I have, in two thousand and seventeen, you got approval, and up until now, nothing's been done from two thousand and seventeen till now. Why?
In two thousand and seventeen is when we were told we had to get the waiver from the DEP, and they weren't very responsive. And then once COVID came, it was non-responsive at all. From there, this was about a year and a half ago, maybe now is when we started that process again. We had to get, hire a company to come and write a letter of interpretation and then submit our approval to the DEP again. And now it's about a year later, we've gotten the news that we don't need to have that permit.
Okay, what about the rest of the things? Let's talk about the trailer. The trailer, you had a fire and the building burnt down, and you put a trailer there. We gave permission in two thousand and seventeen to put a structure up, and from two thousand and seventeen till now, the trailer is still there. Why?
I don't believe there was permission to put the building up in two thousand and seventeen without the.
No, the chair is referencing the board's approval.
Yes.
But then, yeah, post that approval, things were done as far as resolution compliance, back and forth with the plans. But yeah, that's what you're referencing, correct?
Yes, I am.
Yeah, Clyde's thinking of building permit, you know, like actual permission to build it.
Oh, okay.
So really, from two thousand and seventeen, when approval was given, nothing's been done on that application. Am I correct?
Well, physically on the site, no, but.
That's what I'm talking about.
Yeah, physically on the site, no, but there are other steps the applicant took to secure outside agency approvals from the borough, which sounds odd, from the county and to work with the DEP. So he had his engineers working, but no, there was no work done on the site.
Well, that's what I'm asking. From two thousand and seventeen till now, two thousand and twenty-four, nothing has been done on the site, and I want to know why. Why hasn't anything done? We're talking seven years here. Can you give me an answer to that?
We couldn't remove the trailer until the building was constructed. And as far as the building being constructed, it was, at least for the past year and a half, has been the holdup of the DEP. Before that, it was COVID and lack of funds. It's very detrimental to our business, and now we're back on our feet and we want to move forwards.
The lack of funds is one of the reasons why things didn't progress?
Yes.
Questions from the board?
So you're asking for the extension for what was approved. You're not making any changes. I just want to get that on the record.
No modifications are proposed.
What was approved is what is going to be done.
And we're ready to proceed and construct the structure. We're.
Have all your estimates been updated, so you know financially what you're up against?
Verbally, I haven't received a physical estimate, but it's basically doubled in cost since the original estimate. We have spoke to the contractor. Just waiting, you're waiting for the physical estimate.
What I am concerned about, when the approval was given in two thousand and seventeen, and now it's two thousand and twenty-four, and now you're looking and you're saying that very soon you're going to start, how do we know that that's going to happen? Because it didn't happen the last time.
Now that we have everything in place from the DEP, we're ready to, as soon as we get the approval from the town, county, we're ready to begin. That you have my word on. So, you know, once, once all the, say, code is out of the way, we're ready to begin construction.
Because we cannot give you another five years with the same application again, you know, it's too far. It should have been done a long time ago. I hope you understand that.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Want to proceed with your next witness, please?
Thank you very much, Clyde. Jack?
I have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry. Come on back up, Clyde.
If the approval was given in two thousand and seventeen, was that predicated on getting approval from the DEP?
Yes.
Or was it given to you so you could just immediately start building?
No, that would have been conditioned upon getting the DEP approval as well as other approvals. Soil conservation from the borough, county approval. These boards are, these boards are always our boards of first impression. So we come to the board, and any approvals that you grant are always conditioned upon going and getting outside agency approval.
So you started working on the DEP approvals right away?
Back in seventeen, yes. And then it was delayed.
How long was it delayed?
At that time, it was probably about a year or so.
Okay.
There was a miscommunication between the original company we had hired, and that's why now we utilize Trident before it wasn't Trident. So we started the.
I'm just trying to see the timeline. So say in two thousand and eighteen, you got approvals, or you found out that you had to do something else?
In two thousand and seventeen, when we were told by the board to seek the DEP approval, we hired a company to write a letter of interpretation. We never received that letter after paying for it for probably about a year. We just assumed it was standard practice.
So then what happened after you got that letter?
We never, we never got the letter at that time.
So you just let it?
We then hired Trident and began this process all over again?
In two thousand and eighteen?
No, that would have been about a year and a half ago, two years ago.
No, I'm talking two thousand and eighteen.
We never received the letter from the original company.
Now I realize that, but then it just went.
Then COVID came and it was.
Well, COVID was two thousand and twenty.
Right. Right, so after, in two thousand and seventeen, after about a year not receiving a letter, bad financial standing. We worked with it and.
Okay, so now your costs have doubled, but you're going to be able to start the construction?
Yes.
And you don't have anything in writing from this company, a written estimate?
I don't have a written estimate, an updated one today. I did speak with them, waiting for them to provide the new one. We do have all the old plans from when they did this back in two thousand and seventeen. Verbally, they informed us it's about, it's about double.
Yeah, but verbal isn't legal. So if you get it in writing, how do you know, like?
Double, double would be best case scenario.
But you know that you'll be able to do it based on the verbal?
Yes.
The only, the only permit that you're waiting for now is, is what permit? From the county, from the county, is it?
From the.
DEP? Where?
Yeah, well, no, no, we don't need anything else from the DEP.
Nothing.
No, we need, we need Jay's sign off, but in order to get Jay's sign off, I got to finish with the county. I have to get this extension, and I have to prove to him that we've satisfied the DEP. And then when we have Jay's sign off, I think then we're fine.
Mr. Cornell, you okay with that?
Mr. Chairman, that's correct. We have a report dated July nineteenth, two thousand and nineteen, and there were three items, county approval, the water report, and the DEP approval. So in order to address the conditions of the board's original two thousand and seventeen approval, there's three items that need to be addressed. If they're provided to us, we can sign off and say that the board's conditions of approval have been addressed, the plans can be signed, and it can move forward. So, but it's really up to the applicant to provide that missing information.
And you will be able to provide that quickly?
Absolutely.
All right, just to ask a question. So the application has expired, so that's preventing them from doing certain things? Is that, is that true? Is that?
It's, the timeframe has expired. They never addressed the original conditions of approval. So when they came before the board in two thousand and seventeen, the board put conditions in the resolution of approval that had to be addressed. Our office had outstanding items that had to be addressed in the form of revised plans. The planner had items that needed to be addressed. So from two thousand and seventeen to two thousand and nineteen, they were able to whittle down that list that may originally have been ten pages. They've got it down to one page with only three items.
So, but if they, if they did those things at this time, could they move forward, or is there something?
That's why they want the extension, so.
You have to grant them an extension.
Right, you would grant an extension.
They can't get their building permits because the.
The approval has expired.
It's expired, okay.
Correct.
All right.
But we're right there.
Oh, Mr. Cornell, we can, we can, the extension that they want, we can set a time limit on that, that it has to be done within a certain amount of time.
Mr. Chairman, I would maybe defer to your attorney, but I know they're asking for a year. Maybe you don't give them a year. If you want to see progress, maybe you give them six months, or maybe you give them three months to come back to you and confirm that they have the outstanding items. I would, I guess, see if that's appropriate, but.
Either of those are legally appropriate.
Yeah, so if there's a concern about a one-year timeframe, you may want to tailor it to make sure that compliance is achieved.
I have in the past taken shorter extensions, and then, you know, I'll return to the board on a night and say this is where we're at and keep the board apprised of that. That's a procedure I've done in other towns, so I don't take a particular issue with that.
I believe some of the outstanding items we can satisfy tonight.
Oh, yeah. But I think they probably want to see some activity out on the site.
Right.
We want to see the activity only because this application has expired, and it's such a long period of time. We need to see that there is progress there. You have to prove that to us, because it's been such a long time since this thing has been in existence here. So, you want to call your next witness?
Sure, sure.
Thank you very much.
Frank.
So I'm sworn.
Please raise your right hand. Swear it's all the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I do.
You're sworn.
Thank you.
Share with the board your, your name, your credentials.
Absolutely.
License.
My name's Frank Farrell, F A R R E L L. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey. I've appeared before the Saraval Plan Board as recently as two thousand and twenty-two and before New Brunswick on Monday this week. My license is current and in good standing, and I am very familiar with this application.
I make the motion we accept these credentials?
Second motion.
Okay, proceed.
Thank you.
You've heard a good deal of the discussion. So if you could just, in a better version than I did, please, just share with the board the approvals that you have secured and how, what you think is left, and maybe like a bit of a timeframe of what you think is realistic.
Absolutely. So, and I brought the short, the small version of the materials that we've developed. There's more correspondence and whatnot that went back and forth between our office, Mr. Cornell's office, Mr. Leon Cavalo's office, and for soil erosion and the county and a number of other, a number of other agencies. The short version is, rather than harp on, we know the application, we know where we are today. The three issues that are left are the county approval, the DEP, and the water. There's a comment on the water distribution system as part of the proposed construction. So roughly in that order, the county approval, we have a county letter dated, maybe, thank you. Sorry, in front of me, October seventeenth, I'm sorry, October twenty-fifth of two thousand and seventeen, wherein the county has identified what the performance guarantee would be, should be submitted, so that they can release the project for a road opening permit and the rest of the county approvals. The county doesn't issue this letter with that provision in it, in my experience, unless they are sure that it has generally met the standards for the county review process. If the letter, the letter would be longer and have more comments in it or something like that. So we have to post a bond and just file, file our paperwork with the county, and we should have a county, an official county approval. The DEP, as you'll hear from another professional, is, there's been no need for the application that was submitted after some months of waiting for them and multiple plan reviews. My office prepared the permit plan and then a revised permit plan, and then another revised permit plan, only for the DEP to finally, my understanding is, to tell us finally that we don't require an approval from them. The last issue is is the water distribution system, and my understanding is, as the requirement or as it would relate to the building construction and the fire sprinkler system therein, is the existing water system on the site or in the street nearby sufficient to support the demand? Based on discussions between our office and the several, I believe it's the several construction officials' office at the time of around two thousand and nineteen, maybe late two thousand and eighteen, it became our understanding that the building is not of sufficient size to require a sprinkler system. And as such, I don't believe that one is proposed. However, time has passed, and if there is a requirement now that the sprinkler system be installed, that would become, that would come as part of the submission process for construction, construction drawings and plumbing permits by a professional that is qualified to do those calculations and do that testing.
Mr. Chairman, that's not what the comment has to do with. The comment, it doesn't have to do with the sprinkler system in the building. It has to do with the type of construction of your building and whether the borough can provide a fire, the fire flow needed to fight a fire. So if you're building a wood construction building, you might require a fire flow of three thousand gallons per minute. A fire hydrant test in front of the site would show that thirty-five hundred is available, so you're fine. That's what we want to just know, is that there's enough fire flow available to support whatever type of building construction is proposed. That's typically done by a fire flow test through the borough's construction office and calculations either by yourself or your architect.
Sure. And I believe that I would have to review the file in a little bit more detail if that was, if that test was done, but it's my recollection that there is an existing water meter and water service right in front of the, right on the front corner of the site, right at Scott Avenue roughly. And I believe that if it would be required to be, if we needed a pump or a system that would assist in suppressing a fire at this location, that could be constructed on the site without detriment to the application or the site in general.
That's, that's what we need to see.
Sure.
So that, that reported, once that's provided, that'll address the concern.
Noted, and I believe that we can make the request to have that test performed or confirmed, at which point we can supply the required documentation to your office to your satisfaction.
This paperwork that you're talking about, how long will it take you to get that paperwork done?
The fire flow tests, I haven't submitted one in Saraval recently. So I'm not exactly sure what the turnaround would be. If I, if Jay or if somebody else is familiar with that, I would appreciate.
I don't, I can't speak for the fire official, but I would say within a couple of weeks, I would think he'd be able to turn it around. I don't see anything with that.
That would have been my estimate. I appreciate.
Okay, couple of weeks on that. What about the one with the county? How long?
The county is, we submit a check and paperwork, and the county may act on it as soon as their next formal meeting, which is probably inside a month.
Okay, so we're talking about probably a month for all the paperwork that needs to be done on your end?
I believe that is approximately accurate, yeah, about a month.
A submission to the county, keep in mind, obviously, we wouldn't have control over the county's response to us.
That's, that's.
But the average is about a month?
Yeah, well, yeah, they have meetings every month.
I would say, I would say six weeks, because if you miss, if we submit the day or the week after they've just had a meeting, you have to wait an entire month, then they have to go through the process of reviewing it, et cetera. Six weeks is probably.
Okay.
An okay timeframe.
You already submitted it.
I, yes, we have the letter from the county stating that if we post our bond and submit the rest of the required paperwork, they were good.
And submitting the bond is ready to go, too?
I don't write that check, but I believe that Clyde has indicated that he's ready to move this project forward.
Okay. Any other questions?
One more. Let's bring up Jack, so we can talk to you a little bit about the DEP, if you could. Jack, come on up and join us. Jack Kelly from Trident, so you'd be sworn.
Raise your right hand. Swear it's all the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I do.
So my name is Jack Kelly. I work for Trident Environmental. I'm an environmental scientist and consultant, as well as a certified wetland scientist by Rutgers University. I've been doing the land use applications through the DEP on behalf of Clyde's Auto. I stepped in around March two thousand and twenty-three, and at that time, it was told to me that we needed to apply for two land use applications. One of them was a wetland letter of interpretation line verification, which essentially just verifies the wetland area at the rear of the property. And the other was a transition area waiver for redevelopment. Both of these applications were submitted to the state in twenty, or June of two thousand and twenty-three. They've, I've been back and forth with the DEP since then regarding the applications, and we're nearing the end of our, hopefully, you know, receiving a resolution for it. So the wetland letter of interpretation was originally received for the property in two thousand and seventeen. It verified that there was a wetland in the back, and it's the same line that we reapplied for in two thousand and twenty-three. Those verifications are only good for five years, so it expired in two thousand and twenty-two, and we needed to reapply for it. We've agreed upon the same line. I've been back and forth with the reviewer, and we're just waiting for a formal issuance of the document. It's in its supervisor review right now, so I'm anticipating it should only be a couple of weeks at this point. But again, we have nothing in hand besides email correspondence to verify that at this current point. The other application was the transition area waiver, which, again, I only came in in two thousand and twenty-three, so I can't speak on the previous environmental companies, what they were told they needed to do. I'm not sure if that application was ever submitted or not, but when we came in in March, we submitted it in June. This was essentially saying that part of the property resides in a fifty-foot wetland buffer, although there's no wetlands on the site, there is a buffer on the site. And we're proposing to move several eight-by-forty-inch containers. and we're proposing to move several eight-by-40-inch containers around in that buffer area. And to do so, we thought we needed a transition area waiver. So it went by 10, 11 months, and in the beginning of May, the project reviewer from the DEP reached out to me and asked about disturbances in the area, to which we had previously said that the shipping containers were a permanent disturbance. And she let me know that the DEP views the shipping containers as a temporary disturbance. And in order to get a transition area waiver, there needs to be at least some kind of permanent disturbance that is being added to the area. She said everything in that area is temporary, and she cannot issue that permit to us, and that it's not applicable to our site. Again, this permit is just for the buffer area moving those shipping containers. But at this point, we had to withdraw the application because she said there was nothing that she could give to us for, for our submission. We're waiting on the formal withdrawal letter that says in the letter why we withdrew the application, which again is on their side of the table. They told us that there's, there's nothing there that they can permit.
Based on your experience, do you anticipate any problems with any of this stuff that you're talking about?
Based on my experience with the reviewer back and forth, I don't see any problems. Again, the transition area waiver, she's, we're just waiting on the withdrawal letter. The formal withdrawal request has been sent to the state. And the, the letter of interpretation, again, I've been back and forth with her. We did a site visit in, I believe it was December. We agreed upon the line, which was already verified in 2017. We're just renewing the, the same verification we had submitted for. I don't anticipate there being any issues at the supervisor level, and that should be technically the only thing on the DEP side that we currently need for this application.
Wasn't it stated that no DEP approvals were needed?
By who? By? I, I did, I was thinking of the transition area waiver. We did have the LOI already, but it's expired and he's renewing it.
Right, so.
Put that on me, miss speaking. But it was the transition area waiver, because that was the activity in the transition area that was, that was key.
Correct.
So basically, all the permits have to be given before the construction can start, correct?
We would need the letter of interpretation before the construction, but I think your testimony was you.
Again, I foresee it coming in a couple of weeks, at a minimum, we'll say a month. Again, it's at the supervisor level with, and which my experience with the DEP has always been, once it reached that, reaches that level, it's a few weeks. And again, that withdrawal letter, I, I can't say for sure, but I think I'm going to receive it in a couple of days or so. It shouldn't take long for them to type it up, and that'll give the formal reasoning why we did not have to get a transition area waiver for the property.
So what we're saying here is, once we get the letters that he's going to provide, and once the bond is given to the county, then the construction can start soon afterwards, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and the flow tests?
Yeah, the flow test is within that timeframe. All of these things can run concurrently.
Any other questions?
I have another one. In March of '23, you did the land use?
It was submitted in June of 2023. I picked up, it came to me at Trident in March. It took us about three months to get the materials together to submit it to the state, and I believe it was June that it was formally submitted.
Okay, and then you said in May, you received what, May of this year?
May of this year, it was, it was about four weeks ago that.
So you waited from June to May of this year, 11 months?
Well.
What happened in?
Oh, that's, that's.
That's, that's all in the DEP's hands, so some of these permits generally take up to a year, six months to anywhere above a year to receive. We submitted the application to the state in June of 2023.
So how are we going to give a three- or six-month extension?
Well, we're at the end of that finish line, is what we're saying. This is, just by the way, just as an aside, as you can tell, I mean, working with the DEP, it just takes forever. But Jack has just testified, he thinks he's pretty much at the end.
Yeah, I mean, the withdrawal is the withdrawal. Again, generally, it's, it takes maybe a week to get a withdrawal letter. I know it was formally submitted on the 18th, with the withdrawal was sent to the DEP. It's now the 26th, I believe, so I mean, we're, we're right around the time where we should be getting that withdrawal letter, which can be provided just to show, you know, no permit was necessary. And then that, that letter of interpretation, again, based on where it is on the DEP's data miner, which is available online, I have a hard copy of it if you'd like to see where it is now. I mean, it's at supervisor review, which, again, in my experience, generally is about a month. I believe the final back and forth was on June 3rd. That was recorded in data miner, so, you know, it should only be a couple of weeks now, I believe, until we get a formal letter of interpretation.
Any other questions?
Just have a question for J.J. Do you concur with all this? Because we're not too familiar with the DEP and that stuff.
I haven't seen the official paperwork, but in general, it sounds appropriate that something submitted to the DEP, it could take a year to go through and get a response. I think that we saw 2019 as the last correspondence, thinking that nothing's been done over the past five years, but reality is, it took a while to get the new consultant on board. He started a year ago, he submitted, and it sounds like it's very close to being resolved. So that, that sounds appropriate based on what was just testified.
Correct, and I have the data miner sheet showing that there was, you know, November, something was done December. I have a hard copy if anybody needs to see it, but there was, it's been moving through the DEP's process. It hasn't just been sitting stagnant.
Any other questions?
Just wanted to be clear, there's nothing the DEP needs from you to finish their review?
Correct.
You have any other witnesses?
I do not, Mr. Chairman.
All right, I'm going to open it to the public. Is there anyone from the public here that wishes to speak in reference this application? Anyone from the public wish to speak?
Chairman, I move that the public portion be closed.
I close the public portion.
Before the board gives a vote, Mr. Klausert, would your client consent to paying the professional fees that have been incurred by the board in dealing with this request for an extension?
Oh, certainly, that's only appropriate, yeah.
And does the escrow remain open in this matter?
Yeah, yeah, it has to, I agree.
You, you could work with the borough to replenish that?
Yeah, I, I submitted a check for $1,000 in May 8th, and if there's a request for an escrow replenishment, absolutely, just isn't the normal course, yeah.
I just want to say that, and I've said it before, my concern is that this site plan was approved in 2017, and here we are in 2024. I'm very concerned about that, and I'm very cautious about this application because of that. Nothing has been done. We're talking permits, we're talking the construction site. The trailer is still there, which was a temporary trailer that, there was a fire back in 2012. And I'm looking for some type of assurance that this time it will be done. I mean, you're assuring me with the permits, but I, I need the assurance that the construction is going to start because of the, the time period of 2012 to 2024. That's my concern here.
Understood. You heard Clyde's testimony, I think that's what you have to, to value it on. And if you want to put me on a leash and say, Peter, come back in six months and tell me where you're at if you haven't, you know, finished building or you haven't started, I have, you know, no issue with that. I think in a matter of, it sounds like from what our professionals are telling us, in a matter of six, eight weeks, we should be submitting paperwork to the municipality showing all of these outstanding items being achieved.
Would you be willing to come back in three months with a progress report to us?
I'd be willing to come back in three months with a progress report. I've been doing this for, I don't know, 18 years now, and three months is a short period of time in the world of, that I live in, but I have no problem coming back, but I would ask that the board have the expectation I might still tell you we're waiting on the DEP or something got hung up at the county or something like that, but I'll be able to show you that we're working on our end.
And if that, if that happens, something gets hung up, can you provide some physical evidence such as a?
I think we owe it to the board at this point to do that.
Yeah, some documentation.
Sure, certainly.
Any other questions from the board?
Procedurally, Mr. Chair, we're talking about granting an extension for three months? Or are we talking about granting an extension for a longer period of time with a condition that my, that I be back here explaining where we're at? Or am I coming back and asking for the extension to bump forward? Whatever you decide, but maybe from a procedural perspective and resolution adopting, if you were to grant a longer exception, extension, but it be conditioned upon me coming back to the board at a certain point, just a thought.
Didn't you just state that it would only take, combined speakers, that it would only take some six weeks, some four weeks, some a week and a half? So why would it be?
Our estimates based on?
Okay, so three months to bring that information up?
Sure.
Should be more than enough.
Yeah, I, no issue with coming back and reporting in three months. If you want to, if you want to turn it into a three-month extension and say, come back and, you know, when you report to us in three months, we'll give you another extension. But the, your ordinance is triggered when, and Andy and Jay can correct me, is when construction begins, then the approval is vested. I'm sure if there was a stalled period, there's a different interpretation, but actually, starting the construction, pulling the permit, is what vests the approval under your ordinance. That's unlikely in three months. Just based on the construction testimony that you heard, that's why I'm suggesting perhaps a longer one, but pull my leash in here and make me come in and tell you where we're at.
Supposedly, we do it this way. You come back in three months and give us a report on where we stand with the, with the permits and, and keep Mr. Cornell advised as to the progress of it. And in three months, formally come back to our board, and we'll make a decision at that time where we're going to go from there.
Okay.
Is that okay with you?
Yeah, we're, yeah, that's not a problem.
I want to take a vote from the board.
Are you proposing a three-month extension?
Yes.
Okay.
Is the board willing to give a three-month extension and, and have Clyde come back in three months and give us a report, and we'll take it from there? If that's fair, I need a roll call vote on it.
Is it, but do they have to renotice for the, at the three-month time?
You don't need noticing for extensions.
Okay, so really, there's not, there's no extra work that's being done by doing it this way?
Mr. Klausert has to come back in.
Well, he was going to come back anyway, okay, all right.
It's fine, it's appreciated, it's more than fine, it's appreciated.
Make a roll call vote on this.
Do we get a motion in a second on this?
Yeah, I do, and I need a motion in a second on this three-month.
I'll make a motion to give the three-month extension.
Need a second? I have a motion and a second? Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Okay, it's a three-month extension on this, and like I say, the board, all of us, are very concerned on getting this started. It's been too long.
Understood.
So as quickly as you can use your influence with the DEP and the county, we would much appreciate that.
Understood, thank you very much.
Our next application is 2404 C&amp;W Infinity LLC, 980 Route 9. Mr. Page.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, board members. My name is Michael Page. I'm the attorney for the applicant, C&amp;W Infinity LLC. I previously submitted the requisite jurisdictional documents to the board secretary, so I'm assuming that we have jurisdiction.
The board does have jurisdiction.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, board members, this is an application for use variance and preliminary and final major site plan approval to allow the applicant to convert the currently existing second-floor office space into two residential apartments in the building that's located on the premises. And for the property located at 980 US Highway 9, Block 43901, Lot 8.02. We were, if the board may recall, we were here, probably, it was a little over a year ago, for an informal, to get the board's, some feedback from the board with regard to this application. As a result of that feedback, my client put together a formal plan for the application, and we've gone through two technical review meetings, speaking with the board's engineer and planner, and tweaking those plans to put our best foot forward with regard to this application. And with regard to this application, I'll be calling two witnesses. The first will be Mr. Wayne Toa, who's the representative on, half-owner of the applicant, C&amp;W Infinity, and also Mr. John Chadwick, who's here, who is a professional planner. So at this juncture, first, I would like to call Mr. Wayne Toa.
Raise your right hand. You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I do.
Mr. Toa, you are the?
Can we get the spelling of your name?
Spell your last name?
My last name is T-O-A, first name is Wayne, W-A-Y-N-E.
Mr. Toa, you are representative and 50%? Thank you. Mr. Toa, you are the representative of the applicant, C&amp;W Infinity LLC?
Yes.
Okay, and the applicant, C&amp;W Infinity LLC, owns the subject property?
Yes.
And if you would, if you could please tell the board in your own words what it is that you are requesting from the board?
We want to, from the office building to variant to the residential, uh, house, I mean, the apartment.
And the details of the plans for your proposed project for the new residential apartments are detailed on the plans that have been provided to the board by Mr. John Ridgio, architect?
Yes, he's my architect.
Okay, and, um, Mr. Toa, I have no further questions for you at this time. I guess it's, just as the board can see from the details of the plans, I think there are each two-bedroom, one-bath apartments on the second floor, is that correct?
Yes, correct.
I have no further questions for Mr. Toa at this time.
If I'm not mistaken, we don't have the actual floor plans of the apartments.
You should, there was, there was revised first page submitted recently, but the board should have plans that were submitted back in, they should be there.
Do you have a copy?
We, I do.
I have it.
We do not have it. The actual apartment. The actual apartment plans.
I have a copy here with me, but they were submitted. They were submitted back on March 22nd, 2024. Yes.
Goodbye.
Yes. There it is. There we go. The floor, the floor plans, as you, as you, unfortunately, I don't know why you all don't, don't have them. I hand-delivered all of the copies of the plans, but the floor plans were not modified at all pursuant to the technical review meetings that we had. It was the first page that was revised to reflect a different structure of the parking, adding some more green space to it, the landscaping, the parking spots, all of that stuff. And I'll have Mr. Chadwick testify to, to those things and addressing the board's professionals' reports. But the layout, as, as I explained briefly, it's, it's a two-bedroom, one-bath, I believe, for each apartment with a kitchen, dining room, as set forth there. I think each of the apartments are going to have a separate entrance.
I think I have a copy here for the board. It's February. Any of these floor plans have changed, just the first page. Additional copy.
I see there. Yeah. Yes, yes. I don't know. Let it race.
Another additional path is, okay.
We're good.
Okay.
So, Mr. Toa, I have no further questions for Mr. Toa unless the board has any questions. I have Mr. Chadwick to address the details of the board's professionals' reports and any particular details on the architecturals for you.
I, I notice on the planet, we just got the two apartments. One is bigger than the other. Is there a reason for that?
Oh, the one biggest, because I want to take it by myself. I want to use it.
Are we, are you saying that the one apartment is for you?
Yeah.
You're going to live there?
Yeah. It's more convenient because, you know, I'm, I'm finished the job and go upstairs and sleep. Yeah.
So you're really only-
I'm the manager of the liquor store.
So, so really, there's only one apartment that's being rented, is that correct?
Yes.
And you're the, you're going to be in the other one?
Uh, I'm sorry?
And, and you're going to, you're going to have the other one?
I got to rent another one, yep. But I think the size is just a little bit bigger than the, uh-
You're in the bigger one?
Yeah.
And how many people are going to be in that apartment?
Three. Me, my wife, and son.
How old is your son?
My son, 24.
And what's in there now? You have offices or they rented out?
Uh, no, it's, uh, uh, it's empty almost a year.
The, the other apartment that, that you're going to rent out, who's going to rent that out? You? Are you, are you the renter?
I can find someone, maybe, um-
No, I mean, but you're the one who's going to decide who's going to rent the other apartment?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Toa. At this time, I'd like to call Mr. John Chadwick, professional planner.
I swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God.
Yes.
You're smart, Chadwick.
Mr. Chadwick, could you please state your occupation for the board?
A licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey. I appeared before this board a few times, past, many times, past.
Accept your credentials.
Thank you.
Proceed.
Thank you.
In preparation for today, of course, I went through the, your ordinance one more time, master, actually, reexamination report, his most recent document. Been to the site many, many times. What's unusual is the, the reexamination report really didn't focus on Route 9 at all in terms of all, it's a very thorough document, but it dealt with different, different items. So in terms of a vision or a policy, the only policies I found within the master plan that would give a key to the thinking of these kinds of buildings is a safe and repeatedly of mixed use as a alternative to simply a commercial building. And for those who've observed Route 9 in the past, it's mostly one-story buildings. Those two-story buildings are either vacant on the upper floor or are residential, and that's really the commercial two-story business areas of the community. The upper floors are more vacant than not, and those that aren't are residential. And it's a good fit because it provides occupancy on the site on a 24 basis. In this particular case, it's, my, and my judgment, it meets the standard of particular suitability because-
I'm sorry, could you speak up? I'm having a hard time hearing you.
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Is that better? The standard for particular suitability, which is raised in the planner's report, the floor plans show that it can be readily adapted to the two apartment units, basically the same size, one of which is unique that you have predetermined occupancy of the owner of the building. So you talk about one apartment in terms of a new household. Traditionally, planners refer to these kinds of apartments as worker housing, meaning they were not really for family-raising units, they were for workers within the general area and convenient to their employment. That term doesn't get used very often anymore. However, it's true, and it provides the opportunity for reasonable housing and a secure location in terms of advancing the purposes of land use law, which is another criteria that we have, have to deal with, the sites being improved through landscaping, rearrangement of the parking areas, the dumpster facilities and supplemental landscape, well, removal of pavement in the back and supplemental landscaping to the homes to the rear. The homes to the rear, there is a heavily wooded area in the back. Current, we are going to remove pavement in front of, if those have been out to the site, there's a white, six-foot-high fence running across the back, and in front of that, we'll take pavement away and put, uh, six-foot-high evergreens, depending on the planner and the engineer's determination. We prefer the Norway spruce and, and sometimes the Leland cypress is a good tree as well because they're rapidly growing and fill in gaps. There are really no gaps, but we think we can strategically locate them. So overall, we improve the aesthetics of the site. I think we make the building productive, which goes to supporting the goals and vision of your reexamination report. In terms of negatives, I don't see any real negatives. This, this building is no, is not so prominent to Route 9 that it's going to change the flavor of what Route 9 is. In terms of change of the face of the building, there is no change to the face of the building. So if you drive down Route 9 and see the building today and you grant this use variance and it's converted, the building's going to look the same. What'll look better is the sign is going to have a landscaped island around it, the parking has been rearranged to be more functional, the back portion is rearranged so that the dumpsters enclosed, the landscaping, the PVC fence, the six-foot-high fence are all theirs in keeping with the buffering and it's being expanded. So my, my judgment, the, the context of this application in connection with the Route 9 corridor, there is no measurement to say there's an impact, clearly isn't. In terms of impact of the zoning scheme, the building and the improvements are there now. We don't create any additional variances. In fact, this site is quite conforming to all of the zone regulations as shown in your planner's report. So there's no deviations, there's no new variances, there's nothing that infringes on the zoning plan but for the use, as I've explained. Having said that, the final test really is, does it have an impact on the zoning plan? My conclusion, it does not. Does it have an impact on the development of the neighborhood? There's no change in terms of the development, other than enhancing the site as I've described. So in my opinion, we've met those particular tests, and I believe the application warrants your approval. Any questions?
Would have any questions? I do. I don't know whether it's the planner I want to address these comments to or, or to you, Mr. Page.
Tough question he gets.
Negative criteria. You've got two apartments here. Right now, we, we have testimony that one apartment is going to be used by the manager and his wife and his son. There's another apartment that's going to be rented.
Right.
I want to talk about the safety if you have the other apartment that's rented where someone has a child.
That really comes down to the management of this building. If, if any of you are in real estate and, and do have apartment buildings, that's the last family that a renter, an owner wants to rent to. And it's not discrimination, it's wear, tear, and the issues you're implying. This, this is not the site for a, for a family-raising unit. This is a site, as I described it, of working households.
I understand that, but a, a person could rent that apartment that has a small child and it's on Route 9. You have safety factors there, and, and I'm concerned about that.
Yeah, only if the owner agrees to lease it.
Well, that might be, that, that might be true.
We all know about the fair housing laws and discrimination, ages.
I have it right here. And the, the, the owner might say that he doesn't want to rent it, but if that person who comes there uses the, the federal law, then he would have to rent it. But I'm concerned about a child. There's no sidewalks there. It's a commercial area, and you're talking about a school bus, there's no play area, there's nothing, and I'm concerned about that.
You know, the only outside recreation, well, outside area is that area we're expanding between the fence.
I know, but-
And you're, and you're right. And I think from a practical standpoint, you know, you can always say it's going to happen, but in terms of a single apartment for rent, I think there's a great deal of control from the property owner without running afoul of fair housing laws.
That's debatable.
Of course. I, I don't, I don't, just, anybody could say, John, they're dead wrong, but- But on the other hand, the, the management and, and, and interviewing, credit checks, et cetera, all goes through rental apartment, uh, there's a great deal of control to the property owner. And I think you have, I think what you had testimony, Mr. Tao, was pretty clear in what he wants to do. And I've discussed this same issue with him, and, uh, he's absolutely certain of what, in terms of how, uh, he wants to operate this building.
Uh, I, I understand that, uh, what you're saying, but there's no guarantee that it, it will not become a safety issue. It could be, because of the fact that you have no sidewalks, you have a McDonald's right down the street, uh, you know, from there, and, and you got a highway that's fifty miles an hour, uh, and cars go sixty miles an hour there.
And in terms of coming and selecting an apartment, let, let's assume everybody is rational, are they gonna take that apartment, uh, and, and bring small children in there and not recognize the conditions, the issues that you just raised?
With the scarcity of housing now, people are forced to take apartments that they normally wouldn't.
I'm not sure of that.
And try to make it work, and guess what?
The doubling up in apartments, the overcrowding of apartments clearly is an issue. Living in an unsafe environment, if you have a choice, I don't think is the issue. I think overcrowding and, and, uh, illegal conversions, that type of thing, uh, the real issues facing communities. Overcrowding is the biggest issue.
Well, I, I just wanted to let you know what my concerns are. This happens to be two thousand and twenty-four, not two thousand and twenty, and there's things going on out here that we've never heard of before, and I'm concerned about the safety issue with school buses, small children, Route Nine.
And, and you've heard, you've heard the property owner say to you, that's not his intent by any stretch, he's gonna take one of the apartments himself, and, uh, just think about it, if you own that building, are you gonna wanna have a family next door with small children? Absolutely not.
Is he gonna agree to, to putting that as a condition?
Yes. I'm concerned about that. I, I don't think that-
I think you can put within your resolution, hopefully that you will approve, that the issue of fair housing laws was discussed. I went through it today. I know that the single-family home is not bound under the Fair Housing Act. I don't know if a single apartment unit has that same exemption, because one of them isn't gonna be on the market.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure off the top of my head.
I'm not either, but I, I don't think that anything here is being discussed in, in terms of the fundamental issues of the Fair Housing Act, which was discrimination. That's not the issue.
Mr. Page, you, do you have a comment you wanna make about this?
Um, I, I would just say that, um, in light of, uh, Mr. Chadwick's comments and my client, Mr. Toa's comments, um, I think, um, it's been expressed as to what, uh, Mr. Toa's intentions are, and I think from Mr. Chairman, your concerns, uh, as raised as well, if you look at it from the, the opposite perspective of yourself, um, that, yes, if somebody was going to look to rent a place, if they did have small children, that would not be a place, it would almost be self-selective that they wouldn't look to rent there because of the situation. It's not, it, it wouldn't be-
Proper blame.
You know, uh, I, I can't think of the exact term, but, but from your perspective, where you're saying, hey, you're concerned about these things, you're concerned, if you actually had the family with the small child, you would be concerned as well, and you wouldn't wanna rent there.
Unfortunately, we don't have sometimes parents that are concerned like you and I would be. They, they wouldn't care about that situation. You know, you get a, you get a, a, a small child, seven, eight years old, playing in a parking lot, it's, it's also a liquor store, people, cars are coming in, and a ball, maybe they're throwing balls, it gets out to Route Nine, and somebody gets run over. I mean, that's the concern that, that we have.
Well, I, I understand, and I understand from, uh, Christina's, uh, comments as well, but when, when you're looking at, I guess, the, um, her comment was, you know, the scarcity of the, of apartments, um, so if, if, and I just lost my train of thought there for a second, but for, if, if, uh, I'm sorry, I lost my train of thought while I was trying to, um, address your comments, but, um, I think from a perspective of a family, like you said, they wouldn't want to go in there, um, so, um, it's not, uh, I don't know, I'm sorry, I, I lost my comment, uh-
But if he can't, if he cannot rent the apartment, and he goes through Section Eight, which is guaranteed government funding, then it's very possible that a family with children will be moving in there.
And it just, just came to me, but Christina's saying, hey, but there's a lot of people out there looking for apartments, so you're looking at that concern, but if there's a lot of people that are looking, the, the, the owner, the landlord still has full control over who he rents to. So if I have a family, uh, with small children who is looking to rent, and I have a young professional who's looking to rent, it's certainly his decision who he rents it to, but, and that's not being discriminatory. So if there are a lot of people looking for apartments, then he's gonna have opportunity to, to rent it out to whomever he chooses to rent it out to, and he shares the same concerns that, that the board has.
How many lawyers could that? I have a simple question.
Sure.
The apartment's not rented for two or three months, possibly, and a family comes in, willing to pay asking price for the rent, and a, one, a single mom and a, and a, and a child, okay? Can he say no at that point legally? Is that discrimination? I have no idea.
That was the question we just raised, is this a one unit? Because he, he's gonna take, one unit is not on the market, so it's part of the building, it's not a commodity for rent, and a single-family home is not covered in the fair housing.
So you think this is considered a single?
Well-
Technically, a single family-
That was the question.
I wonder, but, but-
Do you even wanna-
But single family is considered. You cannot discriminate who you sell a house to.
Oh, no, I agree to that.
But you're saying, oh, no, you know, it doesn't apply to single-family homes. I guess it does.
And the other-
Furthermore, this apartment is going to be a difficult sale. Not many people are going to be standing in line to rent this apartment, so when he finally does get someone there, if they have children, I'm sure he's going to rent it to them.
I think it will be in a demand situation, because I think you'll find either, uh, two young guys who both are working, who jump at that apartment, because they're, they're not looking for outdoor space.
But if they're two young guys, they're looking for a nice apartment, they're not looking for Route Nine with the trucks and with the cars speeding by, the traffic bumper to bumper, next to a, a liquor store, on top of the liquor store.
The other, the other scenario is this, he's the manager, and he's renting one of the apartments. Let's say he gets a, a, a better job offer, decides to move away. Now we got two apartments for rent, not one. Right now, we're only talking one, because he's living in one, but that doesn't mean he's gonna stay there for any length of time, he could move, then you got two apartments.
He's there as a businessman.
Well, he, he owns the building, but if he moves, you got two apartments. You offer any other alternatives here, Mr. Page?
Um, I don't, I don't know what other alternatives there is. I mean, right now, he's facing a hardship because the office space is not for rent, um, it hasn't been able to be rented for two years, um, and he's looking to live there and, you know, rent out the other apartment. Um, you know, everybody's been hit, you know, by everything that's happened to the, in the economy, and things have changed, so office spaces is few and far between readily, wanting or to be rented, uh, and he's proof of it. So, uh, his whole top floor, which he, he, he had rented out office space, hasn't been rented in office space for quite some time. So, so that's the, the hardship that he's, he's facing, and why, one of the reasons why he's coming for, before the board today as well.
Before we go any further, I wanna open this to the public. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak in reference to this application?
Hi, I'm Sue Paul, Ninety-Six Albert Drive. The, their, uh, liquor store is my backyard. I, I have no objection to them doing as an apartment, except I have to say, their sewer line goes through my backyard. Now, when it was, it was Harrigan's building a long time ago, and when he put it in, there were offices there, not many, and not many people, but with two apartments there besides the liquor store, I don't know, I mean, if there are a lot of people using the sewer, the facilities and the, the bathroom, I don't know if that's gonna have any, uh, bearing on the present sewer line that we have it now.
Mr. Cornell?
Mr. Chairman, that is something that we raised during the technical review process, and they provided a report indicating it's actually less of a demand with the two apartments than if it was a fully occupied office facility.
Well, it's never been fully occupied.
But, but potentially it could be, so you potentially could have a full office draining through that sewer line, and now you've got two apartments, so that number is less than what potentially could be going there.
The other thing, although they did address this, and that would be a positive thing for us, um, when they put the light, took the light out at, at Ernston Road and Route Nine, and the traffic didn't have to stop, it slowed down at where we live, and it was quiet. Then when they took the light out, they just, what you said, sixty miles an hour, they do that all the time. Anyway, we have no sound barrier. What he said he's gonna put the trees in the back, that will be wonderful, because we need a sound barrier. When they first walked the liquor store, they took all the things on their side, not our side, on their side out, which was their legitimate right to do that, except it did affect us, because all those trees that were back there were our sound barrier. So now if these would put trees in, that would help, but that's my only thing, and if you did address it, Mr. Cornell, I appreciate that. That's it. Okay.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public wish to speak in reference to this? Anyone else in the public wish to speak?
Mr. Chairman, I move the public portion be closed.
Public portion is closed. Mr. Page, you have any other witnesses, or any other ones you want?
There's no other witnesses, no other witnesses, Mr. Chairman.
We do something outside, that, there's a fence. Wanna take a quick break?
Sure, sure.
All right. Board is in recess.
Board is in five-minute recess. Mr. Page, uh, well, we're back in, we're back in session now. Mrs. Page, you have something you wanna tell us?
Uh, yes, well, Mr. Chairman, um, in light of the fact that, uh, we have, uh, less than a full board available, um, and given the discussions that we've had, uh, you know, with regard to the concerns of the board, we'd ask that the vote on the matter be carried to, uh, next month's meeting, um, and it will allow us some, uh, additional time to, um, look into the concerns of the board, uh, and it will then, um, allow us also to, or the, uh, missing board member to, uh, review the audio and, uh, make a vote at that time, um, on the application.
Yes, we will grant that, we will make sure that next meeting, there is a full board here, and we will carry this through till next meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, board members, thank you very much for your time. Good too.
Uh, yes, uh, just, just to be clear, uh, that is, the next meeting is July twenty-fourth, at, uh, seven-thirty PM in this room. Mary, if I'm further noted.
Thank you.
And, uh, we're supposed to come back.
We should be good, Alex, we're, we're, we're good on that, it hasn't been that long.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, the next on the agenda is public comments on issues not relating to any pending or future applications. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak on anything? Hearing none, I close the public portion of that. Next is the, has everyone had the opportunity to read the minutes from May 22, 2024?
Yes.
What's the pleasure of the board concerning the minutes?
I move that the minutes be approved as written.
Minutes are approved. Make a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Meeting's adjourned.